And call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands in, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. Andrew.
President.
Mr. Donahue.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A, Scranton Parking System Update from NDC, National Development Council, received and presented on June 28, 2022. Three B, Correspondence Received from OECD Regarding Code Enforcement Report for Council Complaints, dated June 28, 2022. Three C, Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority, 2021 Combined Audit Report.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So, on Tuesday, July 12, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there'll be a car seat roundup and car seat checkup event. It's where it's at is going to be at the Department of Transportation, up in Dunmore, and it's the NEPA Child Passenger Safety Task Force is rounding up all broken and used car seats to help keep children safe. They'll also be able to check car seats for proper use and look for any recalls on your current car seat. Over time, car seats can break down and not be as effective in saving and protecting children. Here's your chance to clean out your garage, basement, or attic, and finally get rid of the -- these safely at no charge as well. No appointment is necessary. That is all I have. Thank you.
Do any other council members have any announcements?
I just have one. Next week, July 12, we'll be having a public hearing on the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grants Program. That's in sixth order tonight. So after sixth order tonight, we'll table this legislation. We'll hold the public hearing, and then it -- there's a 30-day public comment period, so we'll bring that back the first week of September then. And that's all I have.
Mr. Waldorf.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
First on the list tonight is John Thomas.
Seventy-five-year-old city resident. All my life. Well, here we go round and merry-go-round again. Friday afternoon, I got a copy of the city noise orderance. I took it over to Levels Bar. Talked to the manager for five minutes. Yada, yada, yada. We're going to play music till 2:00 a.m. Locked away. Sunday, I'm going over to listen to the orchestra. Oh, a few feet away from Levels Bar. How lucky can you get? The door's open. I got within two feet in a bar, and this man came running, put his chain link across. I don't want to go any further. He didn't touch me. He didn't threaten me. He said, "Come on outside, we'll talk." I said, "Sure. I'm not going to go in there and talk in front of a big gang of crowds. That doesn't do me any good. It don't serve the purpose why I'm here again." He went on and on. "I'm going to see Geneva House's management where I live." I told him three times, three times, "Geneva House does not take care of noise orderance, even for residents. That is a city issue. The city has to take care of it. You have to discuss things with the city." Yada, yada, yada. "We have to work with you." Yada, 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 yada. "We'll probably play maybe later than 2:00 a.m. We might go to 3:00 or 4:00." Yada, yada, yada. So I just walked away. End of story. Counsel, I hope you have a safe and good summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We did ask for another--
One more quick thing. Orange face makes Richard Nixon look like a choir boy. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did ask for an update from code enforcement in the police department. Once we get one, we'll pass it along to you. Next on the list is Joan Hodoanitz.
What's the current status of the union contracts?
It's my understanding they're still being negotiated.
Yeah. We're in day 186. We're now on the downhill side of 2022. I'm surprised I have not yet seen legislation come forward on the labor -- special labor council contract, which expired in March. And I'm wondering, you know, we've got Offburg continuing to negotiate, yet there's no contract. I would hope that that's completed before you go for your August recess. This is interesting, to say the least. And it'd also be interesting to see how much money Offburg Association's -- associates make on this contract deal. What's the status of the 2021 audit?
Mr. Schuster, do you want to give an update as--
Yes, so I met with the Finance Department on Thursday to get an update on the audit. The auditors at Kohansky gave a June 20 deadline. Ninety-five percent of the items that they required were given to them on the 29th or 30th of June. So at this point in time, they have 95% of what they need for their June 20 deadline. There is a piece that the HR department has to complete. It does need to go out to a third-party person before it comes back for their August 1 deadline. So Kohansky has an August 1 deadline, and as long as the city gets them the information by August 1, we should have an audit that's on time.
Okay, we shall see. And I haven't heard anything on the payroll preparation tax, the questions that Mr. Lazor and Mr. McGovern have posed with regard to rental income and the self-employed. When are taxpayers going to get those answers?
It's my understanding that a meeting's being set up.
I would also assume that in the interim, taxpayers just got to fork over the money, you know, if you're self-employed. That'd be interesting. There also was a curious article in the newspaper this week, The Borough of Blakely, who's taken action on signs on utility poles. People put them up and never take them down. I would hope that we do something like that in the city of Scranton, and hopefully it would get enforced. Many times when I'm riding the bus, you see yard signs and, you know, for-sale signs, you know, they're up on utility poles. In downtown, for some reason, various organizations love to tie ribbons around utility poles, and then they never take them down. Makes the place look a little bit trashy. One thing I'd like to bring up, and I don't know if other people have had this problem, but when are we going to open up City Hall to the public again? Does anybody know? Has the mayor said anything? I know it was closed because of the pandemic, but when is this going to come to an end that a citizen can walk into City Hall, request information, conduct business? Anybody know?
So it's my -- it's my understanding you could do that now.
You don't really walk in unfettered into City Hall. You get as far as the first-floor entrance, then you have to genuflect between -- before the Queen and say, "Oh, I would like to see so-and-so," and then they'll say, "Well, we'll call," and they'll send someone down. I don't know, you know? I mean, I was talking to Frank earlier, and he said part of it was the pandemic, and there's also some kind of security issue. What's the security issue? I haven't heard anything in the press about it. Is there a security issue about people roaming through the halls of City Hall?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm -- we'll look into that.
Well, I will say one thing. After my last firefighter's pension board meeting in June, I wanted to request an appointment with the mayor over an issue that came up during the pension board meeting, but the office was locked, and it was dark, and there's supposed to be four people working down there. So I've been calling last week and this week, and I left a message. No one's called me back. Don't they forward the phone calls if people are working remotely? Are people still working remotely? What is going on in City Hall, you know, that you have to request entrance? I wish we'd go back to the old ways where you could walk in and conduct your business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Two weeks ago when I was here, I said that we haven't seen a street sweeper in Tripp Park this year. And much to my delight, the next day when I was getting home from work, I was driving up Euclid Avenue, and there was the street sweeper. A couple of minutes later, it came around, made the -- came up Bullworth Street, made the turn on Rebecca, and I was right there, and the gentleman stopped and got out. And he said, "I was watching the meeting last night," and he said, "I saw you and a man in a wheelchair talking about not seeing a street sweeper." And he told me, "There are three street sweepers, and he's the only driver." Why do we only have one driver of three street sweepers? He, uh, and he was a very nice young man, only in his 20s, maybe. He said, "When you heard us talk," he said, "I got to get up there and help these people." Very courteous, very nice young man. But maybe a few people didn't pass that legislation about hiring a different company to get funding for us. We could have hired more street sweeper drivers. That's $48,000 a year we could have given to a street sweeper driver instead of hiring a company to see if they can get us funding, which I said was wrong. Anyway, moving on. Also, when I was here two weeks ago, I said about putting my ash cans out with grass clippings and weeds and this and that, and the garbage men kept taking them. Well, today they took my third one. This is ridiculous. It's cans I paid for, and they're taken. Last week, I wrote a note, and they didn't take it. I have to write a note for them not to take stuff that belongs to me? It's ridiculous. I mean, they weren't brand new, but they should be emptying them out and just leaving them like the garbage cans. It's ridiculous. Once again, terrible news yesterday, another mass shooting in our country. It's awful. I've spoken about this before. It's these high-powered rifles. And last night on the news, there was a former worker from the CIA on the news, and he talked about how we had bipartisan legislation to help with the gun control. As I said, that's like putting a Band-Aid on a heart surgery. He said, "What they fail to address is the real issue is these high-powered military-style rifles." And I sit up for years, we've got to get them off the streets. As long as we have Republicans in office, we're not going to -- that's what will happen. So in November, remember, vote all these Republicans out. Put Dr. Oz back on TV where he belongs. Another thing he said was, "In Asia and Europe, they don't have these problems because they don't have these weapons. They don't allow those weapons in Asia and Europe." So maybe we should, you know, see what they're doing and do the same thing. Lastly, fireworks. Talked about this last year. You know, if it's one day, that's fine, but it's like days before the Fourth, days after the Fourth. My 15-month-old granddaughter was in this weekend, Saturday night, 10:30, and she was terrorized. I called the police, explained to her, I said, "They can buy them, yeah, but you can't blow them off in the city. They're breaking the law." He said, "Okay, we'll send a car up." Whether they did or not, I don't know, because they didn't come to see me. But -- and then last night, it was ridiculous. I couldn't get my dog out of the house before it went to the bathroom. She was terrorized. I put her harness on, I tried pulling her out. The thing was terrorized. Something's got to be done. And I had an idea, I said last year. All police officers should be on duty, Fourth of July. Put a certain amount of officers in each section of the city and just let them sit there. Put one in my house, you could see all over Tripp Park. You could see where they're coming from. Go find them like they're supposed to, and first of all, maybe they'll stop doing it, and the city can make a lot of money, too. I mean, it's out of control. I bet tonight they're going to do it again, even though the holiday's over. Something's got to be done. All right, that's all I have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Next on the list, Bob Bowles.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, last week when I was in here, I asked about if you could look into why they didn't finish the paving on East Mountain on Burr Street and Derby Avenue. There's about 300 feet on Burr Street to the intersection that wasn't even touched. It's paved on both sides of it, and it seemed kind of funny. Also, I don't know why they're not paving Lackawon Avenue. It's the main street we have in the city. One of the things that really bugs me a lot, I've traveled, and I'm all over the country, is the comments made about us, the people, how we're supporting and advertising Joe Biden. Does each and every one of us in this room know he's an international, worldwide embarrassment to each and every one of us, not just one individual or the other? What I like to do is ask you guys, one of you anyway, to make a motion to remove the Biden signs till he earns the right to be on a sign. It's already up in Greenwich. We need them off the interstate because people that don't live here travel through here, and I hear these comments. I hear them in Florida. I hear them in Texas. And it's a shame that you people took our voice away and put up the signs. That's what the mayor included, and didn't give a damn about what we believe and what we think. Remember, we own the city, not council, not the mayor. We're the ones that make it happen. We pay taxes. We call ourselves Scrantonians, and yet we're embarrassed. I'd like to see one of you make the motion to remove the signs, put them on a referendum, and see who has the courage to stand up and really do what's right for the people, not for you guys individually or your political aspirations. You know, when you're in a position to do what you do, you've got to remember wholeheartedly, you represent us, but you don't own us. And that's the difference here. When you take that oath to represent the people, it's exactly what it means, represent the people, not yourselves, not for a pat on the back or anything else like that. And I think you need to make something happen to show who we are. You filled the pool in up at Naug Park. Yet you let Geisinger park there for $100,000 a year, which I raised lawsuits and challenged the free parking that they're basically getting when it's $2 an hour in front of the hospital. Why didn't you go to Geisinger and ask them to fill the pool, to care of the pool? I'm sure they would have been happy to. They're throwing millions around like Hershey candy around the city. I'm sure they would have entertained the thought to have their name on something that's worthwhile, that benefits the people in this community. Reach out to them. Open the pool up the way it was when it used to be called Lake Lincoln. I'm sure some of you guys never even remember that. That's back in my age group. And that's what the lake was about. It was about our families, the camaraderie. They had the Cars Father Day, Father's Day. That was a joke. To take them from where they were, where people could walk around, now you had to get down over the bank. You had to walk here. It's not the way it should be done. And the Recreation Authority in Naug should be disbanded, and it should be put under the Recreation Authority in the city of Scranton. You're allowing too many politicians and people that are owned by other people to do what they're doing, and that was one of the things they shouldn't have did. And out front here, June is over. How about putting the flags in the area that would be respected where they belong? You had the flags flying in June, now it's July. Let's put up another flag, maybe for the Italians, the Irish, the Poles, the Welsh, the Syrians. And I could go on and on and on, if that's where we're heading here. And the fireworks display that they had this year, I've watched them for many, many years. I thought it was substandard when they shot off what they were doing. Yeah, we had a fireworks display, but in the past, we really had a hell of a display. The grand finale was like, what was that? And it was over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Ron Elman.
Before I get everybody mad at me, two young ladies stopped me at the, uh, outside the parking lot of Carrotty's, and they asked me to ask council to pursue some tennis courts that they don't have access to them at high schools or -- I don't play tennis, and I didn't know that. I thought the colleges or somebody had tennis courts, but they said there aren't any for these little, you know, smaller people. Well, my friends, when you mess with my pocketbook, it makes me most irritable. In January of '21, inflation was 1%. In December of '21, it was 7%, and now it's, I think, 8%. Mr. Biden blames the Russian offensive for our ills, but actually, there's no doubt about it, his first act of stupidity was terminating all our gas contracts and production. Inflation took off from that. And besides, the Russian invasion was, I think, February 21 of this year. Pick on the poor guy enough. You think inflation's going to be bad right now? Wait till diesel fuel gets shortage. Am I not right? We are facing a shortage of diesel fuel. This is a deliberate action from this administration, little by little, to control Americans, if you ask me. Well, I think I'll pick on Mr. Wolf for a second or two. Thank goodness that he'll be out of here, but not soon enough. But his policies seem to be supported by Shapiro and Fetterman, and I like them, but not their politics, I think. We're becoming known as the marijuana capital of the country. Right here in town, we got a growing organization on market, off of Market and Main Avenue. It shouldn't have been allowed. Now, with his policies, we'll become the abortion center of the country. I don't think it's -- it's a good policy to make taxpayers pay for the social activities of young women. Children don't grow up in a democracy. What we have here is a bunch of whores on my dime. They don't have the -- from what I've read, if this is a states' rights issue, and I see signs for Black Lives Matter and people walking around, don't seem to have an idea in the world what's going on. And as far as Mr. Biden's sign in the city, I talk all the time to my friends down, down south, and he's not leaving a favorable impression for the people of this city, and he's not supported like our mayor and council and some others seem to want us to believe. Thank you.
Next on the list, Lee Morgan.
Lee Morgan. The first thing I have is Mr. Thomas came up here and spoke about a situation he's having with someone over loud music, and it's a business. I think he's absolutely wasting his time here. No disrespect to the council or to him. He should go downtown to the Lackawona County Courthouse, ask for the paperwork, defy one form of PAPAS, read the laws, read the case law, petition the court, and bring the party forward, and then we'll find out exactly where we are, and that'll be the end of it or the beginning of it, but it'll -- you'll get your answer. Now, the other thing is, you know, people, I think it was Mr. Bowles, I'm not sure, got up and spoke about owning the city. No, the people in this city don't own this city. The political machine owns this city. That's why Mr. Biden's name is up there. You know, that's one of the reasons why we have to craft a home rule charter, because we have to give the people in this city a voice. Not, you know, over the 30 years that I've come here, I've watched so many councilmen smirk and laugh, and they've got no respect for the people in this city. It's almost beyond belief. Okay, so I just think the people should go back, since the Fourth of July was just yesterday. They need to go back and look at what the founders of this nation wanted. You know, we have people talking about guns and about all kinds of situations and government funding of this and that, and all kinds of things. And when you read what the founders wanted, we're so far away from that, it's beyond ridiculous. It makes us a weak country, a very weak country. And to be honest with you, anybody who's spent some time and educated themselves would find out that America is not the arsenal of democracy. We have no manufacturing base. We can't even put drones together or give the Ukrainians the weapons they need to fight the Russians. We're bleeding into our stockpiles. We can't even give them the equipment they need to fight Russia. And the Europeans don't have anything either. So if a war does come, hm, there's going to be a lot of dying wholesale, and then the American people are going to figure out they've been lied to after their cities have been bombed into just -- you can't even use the word to describe what's going to happen. We're funding our own demise. We're funding our own demise. And who did that? The Democratic and Republican political parties, when they decided to deindustrialize America so they wouldn't have to fight China someday in the future that our economies would be intertwined. And where's all China's technology coming from? Well, we sold it to them. So when they build fighter planes and aircraft carriers, they're not starting off from scratch. They're using all our technology. So we're going to be fighting our own equipment. And if you didn't learn anything from the Second World War, open a history book. The Germans had the best equipment, absolute best. And they were beat with numbers. So we might have a first wave, but I don't know what we'll have left after the Second, the Third, the Fourth, the Fifth, and no manufacturing base. You know, the American people really need to wake up. And the people in this country need to wake up. And hopefully, the people in Scranton will wake up when we start discussing the Home Rule Charter, because ECTV is going to give us an opportunity to start doing that on Friday. But we need a complete rewrite of city government and county government, and a reorganization of Scranton School District. And maybe the people in this city can come together, and in this county can come together, and we can have a discussion. Not what I want, but what we need. Because obviously, we don't have a government that can furnish us with the things we need. And getting elected to higher office or any office is meaningless if you can't do anything for the people you represent.
That exhausts the sign-in sheet for this evening. Would anyone else like to address Council?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. You know, a lot of people get bashed up here. And as far as politics, the only thing I can go to vote on, because it's rare that, unless you're a dictator, you achieve everything that you say you're going to achieve. Or... But the most important thing to me is, A, is the person honest? And do they try? And that's what's important to me. So if somebody doesn't achieve something or just takes a little bit of a wrong turn on the name of a city street, I have other fish to fry. And that's all there is to it. I paid my taxes a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago. And it's the first time I saw a tax collector present in 20 years. It's, we elected Kathy Wexler, not Wetshler, to the tax office. And I seen her in there and present, and I felt that the tax office was being well-run. So my compliments there. I never seen anyone that was elected tax collector in the office in nearly 20 years. Now, on this walkability, I don't trust stop signs. I get, most people stop, and I've noticed this. And they're polite and whatever. And some people are always in a hurry. And there's no way to argue that the stop light or the stop sign, that they stopped or whatever. I've actually had people in some big old raunchy pickup truck gun their engine when I obviously waited for people that were there before me at the other intersection. And they get aggressive, even if you have the right of way. So I do not think that two-way streets are advisable unless you're willing to put a four-way stop in and in addition to have a period of time that a pedestrian can cross the street without worrying about one way or the other traffic. And that's all there is to it. And as far as bike paths, maybe after 5:00 on Friday or any night of the week. But we don't need bikes in the mix with a two-way street and stop signs. And wow, it's a little much. I'd like to read the 13th Amendment. I always wondered why all of these states were out for wacky laws. You know, always in somebody else's business. This one doesn't want to have a family, so she uses birth control. That one might be funny the other way or whatever. Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude except as a punishment for crime, whereof the party shall have been fully convicted, shall exist within the United States or any place subject to jurisdiction. Now, in the southern states, in Georgia, they used to have roundups of vagrants. And they were just people without jobs during the '30s. And if you were picked up for vagrancy, you were put on a chain gang. The average stay was three years. And you stood a 27% chance of being taken out of that prison in a box. 27 out of 100 prisoners died in prison over vagrancy on that chain gang. So we better beware with these fancy decisions. And by the way, on guns, the Supreme Court said it's okay to carry a concealed weapon. Well, guess what? You could be told someday, you want a Supreme Court decision on that, go to the Supreme Court.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
Have a good night.
Would anyone else like to address Council?
Good evening, Council. Tom Coyne Menucha. What I always find startling is that I've watched these meetings now for a number of years is the people who come before this body and speak the loudest, who want change in government, who want things to change, who say that things have been wronged and we need the community to step up. Never stay here to listen to the input of any of the other participants in this body. We have a gallery here of active citizens who come forward and give their opinion. Whether I agree with it or not, if my opinion is to be heard, so is theirs. But I find it startling that the people who yell the loudest are the ones who come up to this podium, say their word, say they want to listen, and get everyone together. And then as soon as they are off this podium, walk out, leave this building, and ignore the words of every other citizen who's come here before this body to give input. I just don't understand that disconnect of wanting to be heard, yet not wanting or having the courtesy to listen to anyone else. Now, for the police officers, I understand that some of them are on administrative leave. I understand that there was an executive meeting a few, two weeks ago, I believe, on people who were out on administrative leave. Do we have any idea how many of our police officers are out on administrative leave? Out of that group, how many of them are on paid administrative leave? Not asking for the details of the name. It's not a personnel matter. If I'm forced to, I mean, I can go and get the payroll logs from the police department because they're open for audit as well. All I want to know is how many members of our police department are on leave? We have the right to know how many of them that we're paying for. And out of the few that we have, since we do have a problem with the number of police forces, since they obviously wanted to increase numbers, what number of those aren't on the job? We want this community policed properly. To understand that, we need to understand how many police officers are out because of improper action. We don't need the details. But we deserve to know that. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Would anyone else like to address Council? Mr. Voldenberg, would you be able to ask the administration if they could give us the total number of officers on administrative leave, both paid and unpaid, please?
I will, sir.
Last week, I know there was some discussion over whether or not I had the right to speak here. And I had responded to your objections, Mr. Donahue, with a snide comment. And I wanted to apologize publicly to you for that. I was very much in the wrong, and I should have treated both you as a person and the Council in general with far more respect than I did. And I apologize.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address Council?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. Last week, I asked if anybody on the Council was active in the reassessment of the county. And I don't know. It was, Tom, it was you that said, why would, what would we do? And then later, oh, it was Mr. Donahue? Okay. Did you agree with what Mr. Coyne had to say last week?
Regarding reassessment?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember what Mr. Coyne had to say.
Well, he was talking about comparative prices and going back 30 months and what's changed from 30 months to now and what the future is likely to look like.
Well, I think you mentioned the escalation, the recent escalation, if I'm correct, in costs.
Yeah, that was certainly a part of it. I think somebody who's there particularly, do you know, have you done any analysis on how Scranton stands with respect to the rest of Lackawanna County?
I believe that all their data gathering at the moment is still preliminary.
I'm sorry, is...
It's still preliminary, the data gathering I believe that the company's doing at the moment. But I'll see if they have those answers, yes.
Well, do you not think it would be good to have one of you in attendance and able to speak for a bigger city in the county?
At the moment? I mean, until they get their data, I don't know what you want members of Council to do.
Well...
Like, show up every day and go out and help them reassess, or?
No, just go when they have meetings. And so we can have input. We represent a rather large portion of the county.
I'll find out if they're having meetings of the sort. To my knowledge, they aren't. We haven't been invited if they are.
Well, speaking of that, does anybody on this go to the appeals of the property tax meetings?
I believe the city does send a legal representative. I believe. I'm not sure, but I'll find out. I know that they started doing that, but I don't know if they've continued doing that.
Could you find out?
At one point in time...
You're talking about the assessment appeals currently, right?
Currently, yes. Uh-huh, yeah.
At one point in time, I think the city and the school district were sharing that back and forth. But since the pandemic, I don't know.
You don't know?
I'm not sure at this point.
Okay, well, my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address Council? Mr. Voldenberg, would you be able to reach out to the Law Department to see if the Law Department sends anyone to represent the city in terms of assessment appeals?
I believe they do, sir, but I'll check.
Thank you. Mr. Voldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. I mentioned earlier in the caucus, I'm looking forward to the mayor and the administration coming back with, hopefully, some new ideas for the pool at Naug. Hopefully, something different than a three-foot waiting pool. It's something that adults and kids can swim in. Also, just a reminder about the administration. I want to make sure that they have that meeting with Mr. Laser. After we receive that letter from John McGovern and Bill Laser. I'm just hoping that the city can kind of expedite that meeting so that if there are issues, you know, with the rental properties and people that are self-employed, that they're addressed sooner rather than later. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
I'd just like to echo Mr. King on both of those topics that he just spoke about. Also, I did plan on giving an audit update at this point in time, but we handled that during public comment. I do have a few addresses, Mr. Voldenberg, that I'll send over to, to send to code enforcement.
Thank you, sir.
But other than that, that's it. Thanks.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do have a comment. I would like to just say that I am greatly offended by Mr. Elman's comments earlier, during the public comment period. And I will not stay silent and shame on anyone else who sits up here on Council and does. I prefer that people come here and talk about local issues that pertain to Council and to the city and for things that we can actually do something about. I love it when people do. Please tell us that we need more tennis courts. That's great. That's the kind of stuff that we need. But many people do come here to also discuss national issues, which is fine. But do not come here and tell women what they can do with their bodies. Do not. And do not use disgusting bile language here in this body. It is disrespectful. It is breaking Council's rules of decorum, and I'm tired of it. It should not have to cross this line. I should not have to be the only one saying something. And yet, here I am. And I'm, I think I'm normally fairly soft-spoken. I understand that. But when something like this, it makes me very irate. But also to the public, it's just greatly offensive to over 50% of our population, to women. But also to anyone who knows women, who are people with uteruses, who have had to go through the experience of an abortion or a miscarriage or just needed gynecological care and health services. And this, like I said, is not the place that I feel like should be for this discussion. But here we are. And I please ask that no one use such language here in front of this body because it's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. I wasn't happy with that language either, having three daughters. And I don't appreciate it. And I don't want to hear it again. Um, and I don't want to hear it again. So, secondly, um, Mrs. Hoda-Wanis made a great point. She's not the first person to bring up having access to City Hall. I under, I am, you know, I, I get the point where during COVID, it was a safety measure, uh, but I, I don't think it should be forever. I mean, the vestibule, you have to stop there. I get the complaints that you can't, really can't get past that. So, Mr. Voldenberg, could you please reach, uh, to, uh, administration and say, is this, is this a permanent thing, and why? I mean, Mrs. Hoda-Wanis heard a couple of things. I've heard a couple of things from residents, but, you know, hearsay's hearsay. I'd like to know, uh, is there going to be limited access to the residents of Scranton to come to City Hall?
I'll ask that question, sir.
Just a simple answer, and then I want the rationale as to if it's, if it's a no. Um, let's see, what else do I have here? So, you know, I'm very disappointed, uh, hearing that, I think right now we don't have any pools open in the city. It's July 5th. Dog days of summer ahead of us. I know repairs are needed, but, uh, I, I just don't understand why we weren't prepared for this. I, I know, we're talking about the big pool for three years, and that's not, not coming anytime soon, which I'm, I'm upset about that, too, but, but for God's sake, we should have at least one or two pools open in the city. So, I know we saw some postings that, you know, this, you know, we're working on this one, or there's some issues with maintenance, or... So, could you please provide an update, not just for me, but for the residents of Scranton, posted somewhere, as to, are we going to have a pool this year? When, how, when they're going to be fixed? A timeline, please, uh, so the residents can get through this summer. Okay, and then, um, so last week I made a motion, right? To investigate the missing power washer. And I, I appreciate the support from my, my fellow colleagues here on counsel supporting that motion. So, um, with that said, I'd like to update you the best I can, because I think the public deserves it. So, I, on last Friday, if I can open up, oh, boy. Hang on a second, guys. So, I, uh, sent an email to the mayor with some questions. If I can just get this open, I'm sorry. What's going on here? All right, so last week I said, you know, "Good morning, Mayor and, and Mr. West. I would like to request all documents related to the dual-tank power washer the city owns. These documents I seek are to include when it was purchased, when it was used, supporting work orders or work-tracking sheets that the DPW may use instead of a work order. My understanding is the fleet manager will send out equipment and a person, and they track that." So I, I'm asking for that. Um, also, any maintenance-related information such as when and where maintenance was completed on this piece of equipment and receipts, because last year, this was brought to my attention, and it was explained that it was out for maintenance, so... It was a brand-new piece of equipment, so I'd like receipts for that. And then I said, "In addition, I would like to receive any counter-usage data on the machine." So the machine has this counter on it that will say how long it's being used, all right? Which is pretty cool. This is a big machine. This isn't something from Lowe's. This is on a trailer, dual tanks. It's, it's a very substantial machine. And I said, "I believe the fleet manager would have this information at hand, and I would like an update by Tuesday, if possible." So, I kind of received an update today. So the mayor stopped by right before our meeting, and she said, "There is an investigation," which I'm glad to hear, "and the questions that I posed are still part of the collection of data that I requested." So, I was updated that I'm still going to get an update. All right? So I'm just happy to report that out, that there's an active investigation. But in addition to that, so, because I was told last week, and this was all brought to me by concerned residents. That's why I brought it forth, the pictures that I received and sent to, to administration. But I was also told that last week after the meeting, the machine, which was at someone's residence, uh, was there till about, I don't know, 9:30, 10:30, whatever. And then, the next day, it ended up at the Sorrenti Center. And I think some people are claiming it was there the whole time. So, um, I'm, I'm patiently waiting for the questions I posed answered in an update, and I was glad the mayor committed that she's still working on that. So, you know, we can remind us of one of them answers, and... But in addition to that, uh, for my own personal, um, as chairman of Public Safety Committee, I think I have the right to ask for the surveillance of the Sorrenti Center. And it was last Tuesday, the 28th, stayed from 9:30 till 10, 10:30 in the morning on the 29th, which was Wednesday. So that will, you know, because that's based on, uh, what residents came forward to me, this information. I just want to verify that the machine was brought there then, and it wasn't there for the past two months. So if you can please reach out to the police department, I think that would be in their purview to provide me with that, uh, surveillance.
I will, sir.
Can you do that for me, please? Thank you. And I have one more issue or concern. And I apologize, I have a trouble pulling this up. So, a gentleman reached out to me regarding, uh, the Scranton Police Department Crime Stats Portal. All right? I guess this has been, his concern is, it, it's been an issue for eight months. He's had some conversations with, uh, President Donahue, who's done a great job providing with updates. And, and this gentleman said, "Well, you know, I, you know, since you're Public Safety, I'm going to forward this to you." And I said, "Sure, I'll take a look into it." And I promised I'd bring it up in caucus, which I did, and I promised I'd bring it up at the meeting. So, with that said, at Mr. Voldenberg, there's a chain of emails. I don't know if you have all of them. Um, but, you know, the last one, I think, was May, and if you could please find out where we're at, because this is software we pay for. It's not working. Uh, you know, I, I was, it was said, you know, I was told it was an IT issue, and it'll be resolved, and they're working on it, working on it, working on it. So, and this started eight months ago, so can you please reach out? And if you need, uh, this chain, this email chain, I'll provide it to you, but reach out and see where this, where we're really at with this, because eight months is a long time.
I have them, sir, and I'll reach out in the morning.
All right, thank you very much. And I think that is, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just in terms of ignorant comments that are made from the podium, in my five years on counsel, I've heard a lot of ignorant comments made from the podium, and some of them border disgusting, like Mr. Elman's. But at the same time, if we were to just respond to every ignorant comment that's made there, we'd be wasting too much time doing that. And they're usually made to garner a reaction, um, which is what they try to use, but we'll let that be at that. Mr. Voldenberg, um, we've requested a couple times for information from the fire department regarding calls that they respond to, um, outside the city, if they have an intermunicipality agreement, um, in terms of responding and providing that assistance. Uh, and we haven't received a response yet, correct?
No, the chief was still compiling the information.
Would you be able to, uh, request that information again? I think we're going on about six weeks now. It should be able to be, um, pulled rather quickly, I would think.
I will, Mr. Donahue.
And then that's all I have for this evening.
Um, Mr. President, just if I could...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. King.
Sorry, thank you. If I could just add, um, I fully support, um, what, uh, my fellow counsel person, Jessica Rothschild, had indicated, and, you know, in the short time that I've been here, um, I, I feel like counsel, we try to be very respectful to the public, and for the most part, the vast majority of the most part, um, the public is very respectful to all of us as we sit up here. And, um, I just... I would ask that people really consider some of the things that they say here, um, at the podium that, that are, you know, completely inappropriate, inappropriate language, and, and insulting to women and, and people in general, not just to, uh, single councilmen, all of us, and, and all of us who are sitting here in this, these chambers. We're not always going to agree on things, and we, we certainly don't, but, um, we, we disagree respectfully, and I would appreciate if we could maintain a decorum and continue on and, and treat each other with the utmost respect. Thank you.
Mr. Voldenberg?
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the council number 16, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD 2022 Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant Program for the period beginning January 1st, 2022.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved?
I make a motion to table item 6A.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item 6A. This piece of legislation is the Annual Action Plan for 2022. It is being tabled for 30 days to allow for input as to the use of CDBG, home, and ESG funds. On the question? On the question, just a reminder that there'll be a public hearing on this piece next Tuesday, July 12th, at 5:45. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved?
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file the council number 15, 2022, amending an ordinance entitled, "Approving the Intermunicipal Transfer of a Restaurant Liquor License R15376, currently owned by the estate of George Churkin, Wanda C. Churkin Administrator, 326 Hill Street Jessup, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18434, to Clarkes, located 850 Providence Road, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18508, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, per the specifications required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, and to reflect the correct legal name of Clarkes as Clarkes Billiards LLC."
As Chair President for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file the council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It has continued to be tabled to allow for additional input, changes, and/or amendments. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.